Morning, everyone. It's great to see you, especially those of you in the audience sitting out there. We don't normally have a lot of people in the audience, so it's nice when we do. This is the call to order for the Buncombe County Planning Board on August 18th, 2025, and we will have four opportunities this morning for public comment. And the first will be our general comment period for anybody's thoughts on anything that they wish to bring before the planning board. And the other comment periods will be one each during the the public hearings that we have on each of the different rezonings. And you need to make sure that you have signed up if you wish to speak at one of those public comment periods on the sheet by the door, so we will know to recognize you. And each person will have three minutes to speak. And to ensure there are no conflicts of interest on any of these issues today, I'll review the North Carolina statute 160D 109 regarding the conflicts of interest for appointed boards. Members of appointed boards shall not vote on any advisory or legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to this chapter where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. An appointed board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property subject to rezoning petition or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. So was there anyone with one of those possibilities today? Very good. Then we will move on. And now it's time for any announcements from the staff? None? Very good. Then we can have the roll call of board members, and we'll start at the end.
Jay Moreno.
Carl Coon.
Liza Shiloh.
Nancy Waldrup.
Ken Khan.
Jamie Collins.
Alan Cox.
Great. We do have a quorum. And the next thing we need to do is approve the agenda for today.
So moved?
Taken.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved, and now we need to do the same for the minutes for July 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Then we have approved the minutes. And which brings us to our first public comment period for anyone wishing to speak about anything. Is there, do we have anyone wishing to speak? Okay, then I won't bother with the protocol for that, and we will close the pub, that comment period out, and we will move on to our public hearings. And we will begin with ZPH 2025-00021, Foundation for the Arts Math Amendment. Serena Fuller, on behalf of the Foundation of the Arts at the Corps of Education, Incorporated, has applied to rezone two parcels of land further identified as P N 9688-19-0048 and 9688-19-1005 from R1 Residential to NS Neighborhood Services. And we'll start with a staff presentation.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is ZPH 2025-00021, Foundation for the Arts, Building Math Amendment. This hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code.
Including illegal add in the local newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet, a notice on the county's website, and fiscal posting on the site. And these all occurred on the dates indicated on the PowerPoint. As you mentioned, the applicant is Serena Fuller of Artspace Charter School. And the owner of the property, both parcels, is Foundation for the Arts at the Corps of Education. The primary parcel, the larger one, is located at 104 Sherwood Road. And the total area to rezonate is .38 parcels. The second parcel is so small, it's only, I think, 2,000 square feet or something like that. And it's down at the bottom right, and you can kind of see the line's a little bit thicker, but it's so small that hardly shows up on the imagery. My understanding is that this parcel was part of a purchase agreement, and it's going to be recombined with the larger parcel. So the current use is vacant because of what? The G S shows a residential building, but it was recently demolished. And it's, but the property is served by MSD Sewer and Public Water. You can see on the left-hand side, the current zoning is R1, and the zoning on the right-hand side is NS. The parcel is located in an area identified by the Buncombe County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map or the G C map as mixed use 1. You can see the description there. This table compares the existing R1 standards to these proposed, I'm sorry, this should be NS, I think I neglected to change that. It'd be NS. Did you check it? I'll come back to that one. So these surrounding uses, to the north, we have a mobile home park, manufactured home park. To the west and south, southeast, is Artspace Charter School. There is a motor sales repair to the east of that. And so to the northwest, across the, across the road, is some single-family residential. Thank you. So one of the changes would be for NS, if I did our changes, I'd change the top. 5,000 square feet is the minimum lot size, is that correct? 12 is correct. Yes, the setbacks for NS Neighborhood Service are 10, 7, 15, front side rear for public sewer. And for septic, it's 20, 10, 20, front side rear. And max height is, would be 35 as well, not 15. Thank you. Apologies for that. As far as consistency, you can see in the left-hand column, these are all areas in which they're consistent. There's no overlay, there's no flood. There's no substantial presence of moderate or high hazard stability areas. And if there's a proposed zoning district compatible with existing uses, it also has NS adjacent. And so at this time, if the staff welcomes approval, so if board has any questions for myself or the applicant.
And one quick question. You said earlier that a billing had been demolished. Was that on the 2,000 square foot parcel or on the larger parcel?
It was on the larger parcel.
And what kind of building was that?
I believe it was a home.
Okay.
A single-family residence.
So is the parcel now vacant, doesn't have any buildings on it?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
We have applicant. Is applicant going to say anything?
Advocate for Artspace.
Serena Fuller, the Executive Director of Artspace Charter School and the Registered Agent for the Foundation for the Arts at the Corps of Education.
I'm Lucas Israel, and the Facilities and Systems Specialist for Artspace Charter School.
Good morning, Steve Cole. I'm the Business Manager for Artspace Charter School.
And thank you, Britton, for presenting that to the board, and thank you for your questions. We are proposing this because we are opening a new hybrid learning center for grade six through eight as an expansion of our current program. And we hope to be building there a small building where we can have an anchor space for small learning groups where our teachers can work one-on-one with students through a hybrid learning model.
Um, my only question would be, have you had any feedback from the neighborhood about how they feel about this?
We had a community town hall last week. We had a few members from the community attend, and they were very supportive.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, then we open up a public hearing? All right. Then you can sit down, I guess, until, unless somebody has another question. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to address this issue? Well, then we don't have to have the public hearing.
No, we don't.
So that is closed, and we'll move on to a further discussion by the planning board. And if there's no further discussion, just for the sake of the public, I would like to read what we consider when we look at these type of plans. The basis for our decision-making revolves around several issues or several points. Requested change does not directly or indirectly result in the creation of spot zoning, which this does not. The size of the tract, then questioned. The compatibility of the change with the adopted 2043 Comprehensive Plan, which it meets that. The benefits and detriments resulting from the change for the owner of the newly zoned property, their neighbors, and the surrounding community. And at this point, there doesn't seem to be any problem with that. And the relationship between the uses, excuse me, the relationship between the uses envisioned under the new zoning and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts. That also seems to match. But are there any questions on any of these points? Anyone's mind? Okay. Then the options we have for this today are, excuse me, that we can recommend approval of proposed rezoning as it is consistent with the Buncombe County 2043 Comprehensive Plan as presented. We can recommend approval of a portion of the proposed zoning as it is consistent with the Buncombe County 2043 Comprehensive Plan, and we can recommend denial of the proposed zoning as it is presented inconsistent with the Buncombe County 2043 Plan. So do I have a motion for?
Just a reminder to complete a consistency statement during the motion.
Right, to make a consistency segment, yes.
I would move to approve the rezoning and find that it's consistent with the growth, equity, conservation recommendations from the 2043 Comprehensive Plan.
I second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, and we will recommend this to the county commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, now we will move on to the next rezoning, which is ZPH 2025-00022, the Ramsay Math Amendment. Excuse me, Quinlin Matthews of Penny Cup Pit Stop, on behalf of Lynn and Patsy Ramsey, has applied to rezone one parcel of land further identified as P N 9639-31-339355 from R3 Residential to CS Commercial Services. And again, we'll start with a staff presentation on this.
Yep, that's me again. I've got one point to change there, which is that it's no longer associated with Penny Cup.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't change anything else about the application, but I just want to make that, make that known.
Does it use it associated with?
I believe it's independent. The applicant can probably answer that at the, during the hearing. So this is ZPH 2025-00022, Ramsay Math Amendment. This.
Right there. There we go.
That's better. Thank you. This hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That included illegal add in the local newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet, a notice on the county's website, and fiscal posting on the site itself. These occur to the dates indicated on the slide. The applicant is Quinlin Matthews, not of Penny Cup. The owner is the Emmett Ramsay Trust, and the address is unaddressed, because there's no structure on it, it's currently vacant. It's one parcel, it's 1.32 acres, and it's, as I said, vacant, and it's served by MSD Sewer and Public Water. On the left, you can see the current zoning is R3, and the proposed zoning is CS Commercial Service. The parcel is located in an area identified on the Comprehensive Plan as mixed-use neighborhood. And in the slide, you can see the purple, that is the city of Asheville. And so all the surrounding parcels and area in the unincorporated county are in, in the immediate vicinity are mixed-use neighborhood. This table shows the comparison between R3 and Commercial Service and what would change in terms of dimension requirements. You see the minimum lot size would lower by 1,000 square feet. The max dwelling unit break would stay the same. The setbacks would just be 10, 10, 10, front side rear, as opposed to changing depending whether it's on super or septic. And the max height would increase from 35 to 50 feet. This slide shows some of the adjacent uses. I'll start with the city of Asheville, it's the Crown Plaza Resort to the south. There is single-family residential to the east and across Emma Road to the north. There's also a manufactured home park to the north and a little bit farther off to the northwest. There's some single-family residential across Emma Road to the northwest as well, and to the, and the adjoining parcel to the west, southwest, there is vacant commercial parcel. The staff found this, in the consisting analysis, consistency analysis, found this consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommends approval for the above reasons. There's no steep slope overlay, it's not a flood plain, it's, there's no moderate or high stability areas. And for those proposed zoning districts is compatible with existing uses in the area. And so at this time, if the board has any questions for myself, I'd invite the applicant to come to the podium, if he's here.
Good morning. My name is Quinlin Matthews, and like Britton mentioned, I am not represented by, or I'm not representing Penny Cup, but this would be a private venture. And I've engaged the local group, Poder Emma, to better understand how the impact of this organization could affect the local community. We've had a lot of chances to sort of brainstorm about effective ways to support that community. What we will be doing with this piece of land, it'll be a drive-through. There's just a very simple drive-through lot there, which we would park a food truck on. We would serve coffee only and probably just some baked good items, so a very simple menu. As far as noise for the local area, for a short time, we would be running a generator for power until electric was installed, but I would not expect the noise of that generator to affect those living on the opposite side of the road. Let's see, I think that's about all the details that I brought today. But yeah, we, we would expect utility installation within about two months for the electric, the sewer, and water. And at that point, Lynn Ramsey, her property there would be activated and ready for commercial use.
Very good.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any pushback from the neighbors?
No, actually, the community that lives on the opposite side, that's the owner Lynn, she owns that ADU lot, and we've gotten, you know, great, you know, feedback from her. And then the Emma community that's organized with Poder Emma, we had a chance to go to two of their monthly meetings to understand how it could impact their community in terms of displacement, in terms of, you know, the economic impacts and gentrification. And ultimately, I'm happy to let Andrea speak to what, what they mentioned, but we had some great reception from them, and we brainstormed a lot of ways to involve them in the process, potentially to hire from within the community, and also to raise awareness of the current efforts for Poder Emma through the business.
Thank you.
I was, I was just going to add to that, that that's really commendable, that you have done that, so thank you, because that's one of our biggest questions and the concern that we would have. So were, were there any issues brought forth that you could share about what those conversations were like in terms of how the community saw this as a plus or a minus?
Certainly. There is, you know, the presence of, you know, the sheriff's department in particular uses this particular spot as a place to, you know, conduct their business, but it includes stopping people from speeding, but also, you know, suspicion for, you know, immigration status, and we know that that's become an increasing concern in the past year. And what this would offer us is a, an opportunity to use that, that spot for commercial use rather than having it as an open lot and, you know, predisposing ourselves to, you know, the community being targeted in a way that could be, you know, dangerous, that was one aspect. Another potential impact was the economic impacts. They mentioned how, you know, businesses like coffee shops and yoga studios moving into, you know, a low-income neighborhood can be a sign of pushing, you know, lower-income individuals out. And so the agreement we came to is that if the business is used to raise awareness of Poder Emma causes, we can, you know, use the, you know, the traffic and the awareness of that business to bring awareness of causes like resident-owned communities, which is a new concept to me, which I think is fantastic and does, has an excellent impact on, you know, raising up those low-income individuals in towns like Emma. I know Andrea will have a much more, probably thorough, bulleted list of concerns that they had, but those were just two of the probably bigger ones that came up.
Can I ask you a little more specific question?
Certainly.
As I understand it, the rezoning would allow a variety of things in that parcel that are currently not allowed, some of which might not support Emma's objectives as clearly as others. Have you talked about that?
The, yes, the potential.
How you would mitigate that possibility?
And you are right. We did discuss, you know, the potential for other businesses to move in should the trailer leave the lot. And what I let them know is the property owner, Lynn Ramsey, she has no intention of selling the property, so we don't have the worry that the property would be sold and then used for a larger commercial use that could upset the, the uses in the area. But more importantly, the property owner Lynn has decided that, you know, when the property is done being used for this purpose, she would like to install storage units for her own community, that ADU community on the opposite side of the street. So that's what we can expect to see with this particular property after business is done.
I think, I think you bring up a good point in that we're really not to consider what the use is, any use can, that is allowed in that zoning district. So really, it's, it's irrelevant for us to, I guess, know the plans, if you will, because that shouldn't influence our decision.
So I'll just note for the planning board, that is a very long, skinny parcel, so it would be very difficult to develop a lot of commercial uses on that property because of the dimensions of the property.
What are the dimensions?
I don't think we have that off. It's 1.32 acres, but I don't have the length versus side.
Pretty damn narrow.
Huh?
Pretty narrow.
Narrow, it's narrow, it's a narrow property.
And yet the same could be said about potential residential uses, it's not really predisposed to much of anything.
Yes, it would be difficult to develop residential uses to fit parking and setbacks on that property.
While the current owner has no plans to sell, there's no guarantee that that, the owner might not change their mind in the future, right?
Certainly, that's true.
And, and that's the warning, we just need to be aware that things can change, people can change, and possibilities exist for other stuff, and that's, but we're also dealing with the presentation as is, so.
My, my question was less about what you were addressing, Carl, which is correct, more just you've considered what could happen. We have enough saying.
Certainly.
Can we hear from the community?
Yeah, if there's people here, yes, we will when we open up the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I thought they were part of that, his presentation. My bad.
I think that's separate, right?
Okay.
All right, very good.
So I think that might alleviate some of our concerns, because if they're good with it.
Right, exactly. And, and that's what we need to make sure of. Okay.
Then, I'm sorry, one quick question, you said there was a mobile home near, adjacent to it?
I may not be using the correct terminology. They're manufactured homes on the lot across. And it's all, yes, I believe it's all one personal, one parcel, same owner, and yes, the owner of this property, Lynn Ramsey, she manages that manufactured home community.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Questions for applicant? Okay, then I think we're ready to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very nicely presented. Then we will now open the public hearing for this property. And is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Then please identify yourself, tell us the general area of the community you live in, and we have three minutes.
Okay, good morning. My name is Andrea Golden. I'm here with my neighbors, Rosio and Jessica, and we're here to represent the Emma Neighborhood Council. There definitely was initial extreme concern and worry about this proposal for two different reasons. One, because our community has been put on pause for the creation of a small area plan, and this is exactly what we anticipated would happen if made to wait, that the area would start to just be rezoned kind of parcel by parcel without having the opportunity to define a comprehensive land use design for the future of our neighborhood. And two, because we've just seen nationally, there is significant data showing the correlation between the introduction of coffee shops to low-income neighborhoods and gentrification and displacement. Despite that, we really formed a very nice relationship with Quinlin, and we're really impressed and moved by his dedication and time that he put into getting to know the community. And we feel optimistic that there are a lot of things that we can do together to mitigate the impact. And ultimately, the Neighborhood Council did vote to come and make a statement in approval of the rezoning. With the caveat that we are formally requesting to planning and zoning to staff, and we will be requesting to commissioners to please begin the small area planning process with the Emma community. We have fundraised the funds to do the first round of small area planning and have not yet received confirmation if we're able to begin. We know that change is coming, we know specifically post to lean, more change is coming. And we really want to be good collaborators with small business owners. Quinlin also lives in the Emma community, and so we'll be working closely together. But we really need the opportunity to articulate as a neighborhood, a comprehensive approach to land use planning.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all so much.
You're welcome. And is there any feedback for when that could happen with the Emma community?
So I will just say that staff would recommend that the next small area plan that we do would be Emma. But that would be, I guess, not this budget cycle, but next budget cycle, we would ask for the money to do it. Just a reminder that the long-range planning staff is four people total, so we are currently working on the Swananoa Small Area Plan for obvious reasons, and getting that complete before we start another one.
Right. So that would be July?
It would be in that budget.
Okay.
It would be a request in that budget, but as we all know, requests and budget sometimes get cut out, so.
And I was thinking, not even so much in terms And I was thinking, not even so much in terms of the money, as the timeline for it happening, so that it wouldn't happen before July 26?
It would not.
Okay. All right. Then I guess if there's no further public comment, you have public comment as well? Very good.
Thank you. My name is Mike Atkinson. I live at 406 Emma Road. It's one of the pins identified as SF Residential on the map. I'm here with my wife, Laura. We would love a coffee shop next door. That sounds great. What we're worried about is what happens to this lot in the future. Since we've lived here for five years, it's, you know, been used to park vehicles, used as a, you know, a police speed trap. It's been used to pump water out of the creek when we were filling up flush water for folks in the neighborhood after Haleen. But it really hasn't, other than during Haleen, it hasn't been used for anything useful. So yeah, a coffee shop would be great. But, you know, my wife and I, we work in development as well, and we're familiar with seeing properties be rezoned or conditionally rezoned to possibly change back to their original zoning after the current use. And so we'd like the board to consider some sort of restriction that allows for this coffee shop to move forward as a, as a commercial use for the time being, but then after it's no longer being used for that purpose, reverts back to residential, so we don't have a dive bar or some other, some other business be placed there that would be less beneficial for the neighborhood. And, you know, while we're up here as well, would love some further clarification on why we were, we were noticed about this meeting under the assumption that it was related to Penny Cup, a local coffee shop that everyone in town knew of. I think it made a lot of my neighbors feel more comfortable with the project, but then hearing that it's not associated with that is a little bit concerning, just on the change there. Thank you.
So just make a note for the board that we don't have conditional zoning in Buncombe County, and you would be voting based on changing it to CS based on all the allowed uses and not the proposed use.
And just for the record, can you go over what Commercial Services allows?
I have it up on here. You can just tell me if I'm wrong. It's a allowed development types after change. Proposed rezoning would allow additional uses in the district that are not currently allowed. Examples of new uses: veterinarian clinics, banks, greenhouses, kennels, dry cleaners, medical clinics, retail, gas stations, nightclubs, bars, gyms, post office, PUD2, schools, storage and warehousing, and theaters, et cetera. So.
Perfect.
Gives you an idea. It's a pretty broad range of things.
Yes, it is.
And whichever of those should happen to be there, it wouldn't have to go on an acre 1.32 of land, is that what was said?
Correct, a very narrow lot.
Did you say there was a creek on this lot?
And if I understand your statement about conditional zoning, the fact that we don't have it in the county, just to be clear, means, as I understand what you said, we can't do what you would like to do, which was to say, we'll approve it, but if it changes, it reverts back. That's not something that we can do as a board. Is that correct?
Should we ask the applicant to clarify why the applicant changed? Is that a fair question? That was part of the.
Right.
Yeah. The packet said.
Would you like to speak to that? Thank you.
Yeah. And this was new development to me just this past week. On Friday, I was informed because of some, I won't speak to the, you know, financial movements at Penny Cup Co., but they did have to liquidate our project. We'd purchased a trailer together, and they have decided that they are going to sell that trailer and not move forward with this project. Initially, my idea for this lot and this project was independent, but because I do have a family relationship with Penny Cup, there was an opportunity to start this business using their brand. That's no longer the case, but I do intend to move forward, probably selling their coffee, but branded independently. And so that's, that was a recent development that I regret. I wasn't able to fill you all in on a, on a business day, but.
So even though we can't consider all the possibilities?
Right.
I mean, even though we have to consider all the possibilities that it can be used for, and not just one specifically, your intent has not changed, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any further questions.
So the trailer you referred to earlier was the trailer you'd be selling out of, correct?
So I am no longer in possession of a trailer. At this point in my business venture, I will be either leasing or purchasing a new one, but currently not in possession of a trailer. But the business case will remain the same. It will only be a trailer-based drive-through coffee shop. That remains the same.
And again, we have to consider all the uses, not just that use.
Exactly, yes.
Is there any way to get more clarity on what could physically be built on that parcel? Because I'm sort of hearing two things. One, that it's too small and narrow to really build anything significant, and one that it could be a dog kennel or something quite disruptive to the residences, so.
I feel like the issue is that the zoning, the change in zoning would permit those things. The actual real estate available probably would not. So it's an odd sort of calculus.
With the setbacks, do we know, like, physical?
Yes, 10.
And I would imagine if you even.
Setbacks are all 10 feet.
It's 150 feet wide. Well, what's the widest part?
Be surprised what you could build on that site.
These are not survey results.
Well, my other question would be, in regard to this discussion, how aware was the community that any of these things could end up there? Was that part of your discussion with them, or?
The, I will say, the community that I've engaged with has strictly been through the Poder Emma community. I have not met many of my neighbors, and the ones that I do know are single-family homeowners. Those are probably the ones least impacted by anything that would take place on this particular lot. But could you maybe clarify your question? Like, were you wondering what their impression was about the business plan?
Or it's just that they were also aware that other things can go there besides what you're proposing?
Got it.
Sort of like a Pandora's box once you open it up?
Certainly.
There's no guarantee that any one of those uses will fit on the site. You'd be surprised what you could build on that site. Yeah, don't let it get us long and skinny, make you think you can't put a car wash or something like that on there.
It's, it was certainly part of our discussion during the two monthly meetings that I attended with Poder Emma. I think because we're familiar driving past that lot and having been on that lot, we're personally not very, you know, concerned with a brick-and-mortar establishment moving in. It could be possible, but there would be a lot of landscaping, grading, and it could be possible, but it wasn't really a concern when we, when we discussed it.
Well, and my thinking on this is, I just would hate for the community to think that one thing was going to happen, and for whatever the reason, that couldn't happen, and something else that would make them unhappy would happen, and they would feel like they had not been dealt with honestly. That's, that's my concern. I just want to make sure the community understands all the implications of this.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate, during, during our meetings, we, we did remain under the impression that the, you know, potential uses were very limited. So if, you know, if a brick-and-mortar could, you know, be put up on this property, that we, that's not something that we seriously consider just based on our knowledge of the lot. So if, yeah, if that's a serious consideration, it may be something to further discuss.
I will say, I think from our experience with Poder Emma, you take the long view. So the fact that you're here to support this, I know that you're not, you're not ignoring the long-term potential consequences. So I think that, I think that's, that's worth considering.
Do you want to say anything else? Yeah, I think we, I think we're interested in hearing if you have something else to say after all the rest of this discussion.
I guess I'm curious for Ms. Golden, if she was aware of all these potential uses and what the community's take on that is.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I do agree that the conversation was mostly focused on that due to the size and shape of the lot, that it would not be likely for a brick-and-mortar business to move in. So I do think that's a legitimate question. If the community fully debated everything that could go on there, I think people were imagining that would be more use like something mobile or like storage units, which for, you know, our Neighborhood Council, we have a large turnout. Most of the residents that participate in our council are families that own mobile homes and rent lots, and storage is a huge issue. So of the potential uses discussed, I would say that the neighborhood was in support. I don't feel that I could say that there's been a true discussion about future, long-term impacts of what could go on there, and that could be helpful for the council to get to see, and working with planning staff to fully understand with setbacks what could go on there. I will say, though, that we did have a lot of long-term discussion in general. We do see, you know, that kind of core section of North Louisiana and Emma Road as kind of commercial corridors of our neighborhood, which again, we would love to get to explore through a small area plan, so that we could talk about it as, as a community economic development mechanism and not just kind of like one-off rezoning. I completely understand how stretched the planning staff is. Poder Emma staff is also extremely stretched. And so we have proposed hiring an urban planner to take the lead on the process and have requested staff just consulting to make sure that we're doing it in alignment with the direction of how staff would do it. But between the conditional, or the special use permit on 815 Emma Road and now this, our community is feeling like the change is coming at us one project at a time. We cannot wait until the next budget year to start a conversation about land use planning because it's already happening. It's happening now. And so our community has been put in the position of negotiating one-on-one with really wonderful business owners who approached us with such integrity and ethics, and so our community responded mutually. But that is, I do not feel that's a fair ask of our community to continue as we are.
It's, one aspect of this is it, it seems like this kind of project could slow down things until small area planning process gets done, so you don't do anything irreversible, irreparable, and undesirable in the meantime.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't speak here as an individual. I just want to be clear. We, we listen as a Neighborhood Council. We consult with a lot of people, and then we bring our neighborhood's voice to the table. I do think that the neighborhood felt like change is coming. We see it every day. If change is coming, this is exactly the kind of small business owner that we'd like to be interacting with. And we are concerned that if we do not get to start really partnering with Buncombe County immediately, this is a signal of change, to other people who will approach our community with change, and we want to make sure that the land use planning is done comprehensively. And the comprehensive plan outlined, small area plan for the Emma community, knowing that this is what was going to start happening in our community. So I know that's tricky to answer. It's like, we support this project, we have great hesitation about future impact, but really, our biggest concern is not about this specific parcel. It's about the timeline on which we're being asked to wait to actually have a conversation about land use planning for our community.
Right.
With all, with complete respect and understanding to how stretched the county is right now, we 100% can identify with that.
But you understand that we are not able to control that part of the process. We're here today to vote on this one specific project, and if we vote to change from one standard to another, it has long-term impacts, and your, your community is good with that?
Stay focused on that, that'll help.
Yes. I'm doing my best to communicate the message that the council asked us to communicate. I would say we are in support of the business venture that Quinn Lynn presented to our community. We have concerns about the long-term impact of rezoning lot by lot in the absence of a small area plan. I wish I could say more, but to say more would be speaking without having the opportunity to go back and have that conversation with my neighbors.
Is it accurate, Jillian, that when we do the small area plan, this could change anyway, the zoning?
So not when we do the small area plan, but a small area plan could result in recommendation, recommended changes to zoning.
So after the small area plan is done?
Yes.
Do you feel you need additional time on this issue?
This is such an interesting forum for this company. Can I ask Quinn Lynn a question? My curiosity would be, does it cause a business hardship?
If, if we were to say, bring these specific questions back to the Neighborhood Council, does that cause a particular business hardship for you? Is there, is there the ability to, to bring this specific question back?
Certainly, you know, delaying, you know, starting business by an additional month, and I would assume, you know, going through another round of hearings, it would. But again, like, we connected, and we shared the view that the community ought to be, you know, involved in the mistakes of any new changes.
I do think if possible, that could be a good move for us to bring the question back. If, if planning staff were able to have someone visit the council and really walk through what the rezoning would mean from the planning perspective, that would be wonderful. If not, we can do the research and bring that back. Again, if I'm in a different position than like our neighbors who are here and can kind of speak for themselves, I can really only speak to as far as we got in the discussion. If we were able to go back and have discussion, I would be more than happy to and then, and be able to speak specifically to that point.
Can I say also, depending on how you choose to move forward, it may impact how long an applicant would have to wait before they could bring back a new application or bring back this application, whether that is continue to a next meeting, or recommend denial, they could still move forward to Board of Commissioners, or also keep in mind that the board could recommend a different type of, a different area for the rezoning. So there's different options that could have different repercussions for timing.
Could I ask our legal expert to, are we, are we getting sidetracked?
Yes, so that was, if you saw me start to get a little antsy.
We did notice that.
Right, at this point, the applicant and the witnesses are having internal discussions that really should not be happening on the record. Parties are welcome to make their statements to the board, but the back and forth is really not appropriate. Certainly, if you want to table this discussion, even for the, so the parties can step outside, you can move on to your next application. You can continue this to your next meeting, it's up to you. But procedurally, we probably need to stick to a witness-to-the-board, witness-to-the-board situation rather than this open discussion.
Right. I get that, thank you. And that, that does help to hear that. Appreciate it. So, any other thoughts?
Well, I'm just having a look at December, September meetings. You're going to continue it, continue it to a date certain, so.
Lighting and donut holes, it's going to be very, September 15.
September 15.
So that is a choice we have?
Yes, to continue it to a date certain, if you would like to give the applicant a month or a year more time.
Okay.
Can we? Can we pursue the side conversation outside of the room between the applicant and the community representative? Just to see.
We can?
Yes.
If they would like to do that?
So do you want to table it for now and move on in the next week?
Yeah.
Yes. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of tabling it for now and moving on to the next session and then coming back to this one today?
Say that again? We're tabling it for the five minutes and they're going to come back?
Right.
Or whatever?
While we, while we talk about the next rezoning, they're going to talk, and then they will come back in and we can untable it.
But you're not setting it for the September date?
Not yet. Right. We might, we might do that based on what they decide outside the room.
Is that legal?
Yes, so just, I guess we're going to not terminate this hearing, but just.
Pause it. Suspend it?
Suspend you. I'm not on that word. Suspend this hearing for the parties to discuss, and then you can reopen it after you're done with your next application.
Right.
So. For a week today.
I'm moving suspended. I second.
Well. Going to have a space. So that motion has been made. That's happening as we speak.
In a second, right? Yeah. I second.
So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So the, the ayes carried that?
Yep.
All right. Then we will move on to our, our last rezoning for the day, sort of. ZPH 2025-00025, Edens Map Amendment. Kevin Edens has applied to rezone. One parcel of land further identified is PIN 9653-57-2381 from R2 residential to CS Commercial Service. And we'll again, begin with the staff presentation and then have an applicant presentation.
Give me one second.
Sure.
This property was noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statute and county code. That includes a legal ad, notices mailed to adjoining owners within 1,000 feet, physical posting, and then notice on our website. The applicant is Kevin Edens. The owner is Kevin Edens, and the address is 2596 Hendersonville Road. The property is .92 acres. Current use is a residential building lot, and it is served by septic and public water. The current zoning is R2. The proposed zoning is CS. You can see the CS zoning on the right.
On the left.
On the left. No.
Oh, oh, there.
On your left, maybe? Or mine? Sorry, guys. Mix, the, the Growth Equity and Conservation Framework map indicates the area is mixed use area one, which is, is land along partially developed corridors with a mix of residential and commercial or retail developments intended to support further planned developments and to encourage a full range of services and amenities to the surrounding neighborhoods. You can see the change in bulk standards on the, for CS, the minimum lot size on public water and sewer reduces. The setbacks are reduced for either for water and, water and sewer or no sewer, and the max height is 50 feet. As you can see from above, the property is surrounded by other commercial uses, but also some residential uses. It is, staff considers it consistent with the land use plan as it is consistent with the future land use plan map category and description, proximity to sewer, proximity to water, density, proximity, proximity to transportation corridor. It's not in steep flow elevation. It's not in a regulated flood hazard area, and it is not high or moderate hazard stability area. And the zoning district is compatible with the existing commercial uses in the area. It is inconsistent is that it doesn't create a transition between the residential area and the CS commercial zoning. But I will note that the standards in the zoning ordinance require buffering between commercial uses and residential uses. And at this point, I'll ask if the planning board has any questions.
Just how significant that one inconsistency is? I mean, all the rest of it looks consistent, but.
So you can sort of see that along this corridor, you do have that CS zoning adjacent to residentially zoned properties. So it's pretty typical along this corridor, and we do have those buffering standards. And let me just move it back to, like, you can see the C, the CS to the R3 on the other side, and then the CS and Royal Oaks Drive and the residential behind it.
But despite that, the staff recommends approval, right?
Yes. Because we do have those buffering standards within the zoning.
And just to restate the buffering standards, this is with vegetation or fencing.
So it's either vegetation or fencing. Sometimes with the zoning administrator's approval, we let them do exist, existing vegetation if it's a heavily vegetated site, but it's 20 feet of buffer with evergreens or a fence or an earth and burn.
I also note the, the applicants under question D3, this seems to be consistent with what you're doing anyway, right along the parcel, along the last one. So the, the lack of a transition may seem less important if this is already, this is already what the area is being used for. So that would certainly explain partly why staff indicates approval.
My packet disappeared, so I just have one question about that last map.
This one?
No, the one, the side-by-sides, the, that one. Under the proposed map right there, if, if the zoning has changed, there's one last little piece right there. What is that last little piece?
Are you talking about the north, between North Park Court and Spark?
Yes.
South.
That's a park.
Yeah, the park.
That's what I assumed.
That's the park for Royal Oaks. I think the neighborhood is Oak Park.
Okay.
It's owned by us, the neighborhood.
What, what's in it? Just woods or?
Well, it's like grass, and there's a little baseball field and tree.
Okay. All right. That, that would be my question. Thank you.
Okay. We have an applicant presentation? Sure. Thank you.
That one.
This one?
Yeah, that one.
Okay. If you would state your name when you get up.
My name is Kevin Edens.
Doesn't want to work today.
I need to talk loud. So, so this property, we actually own all four of those parcels that are there. There's a commercial building on the lot at Royal Oaks and on Hendersonville Road, which is in the, I guess, the north corner of that property. And this parcel is, is the one we're trying to get rezoned. It matches up to that one in dimensions as far as between that and the park. And then my home is behind this parcel. And then I have a rental house on the other side behind the commercial property. So I own from road to road to road, all the way around. I met with all of my neighbors personally that are definitely within the 1,000 feet, which extended even out further than kind of, you know, we went and talked with everybody. And their only concern that they had was the buffer. They wanted to make sure. And over the past couple of months, we lost a lot of trees in Helene. And I personally planted 60 different types of trees and bushes because I don't want to hear the road either. So it's kind of, I think that was, that's why no one, no one came to the meeting because I think I met with them and I made sure they understand, you know, what we're doing. We presented the, the farmer's market building, and we showed them the location where it's going to be. So I guess, you know, the park is what it is. It's, it's not maintained by the county. We, as the neighborhood, take care of it. And I guess, you know, this, this parcel is never going to be used as residential because it's too close to the road. I think the commercial zoning is the best use for it. And I think it will help my tenants, which is a current tenant, I have a farmer's market. It's going to give them the space they need to conduct their business better than they are now because right now, we're kind of crammed in there and we need that extra space. So, so that's, that's why we're applying for the zoning.
Thank you. And thanks again for communicating with your neighbors because communication is pretty key in all this stuff. And I very much appreciate that. And, and that would be my question then. There were no problems or complaints from the neighbors?
No, it was just the, they wanted to make sure that I didn't chop down all the trees. And I said, well, the only reason why we chopped down those trees is because Helene knocked them over. So that was our only reason, so.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So now we'll open this up for the, a public hearing and comment period. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this property? And if not, we can close this public hearing, and we'll move on to any further discussion by the planning board? Then are we ready for a motion on this property? Oh, well, I can reread what we're considering, which is the same thing that I read earlier. But.
Well, I could say, make a motion to approve the rezoning of the parcels under ZPH 2025-00025 as it's consistent with the GEC recommendations from the 2043 comprehensive plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Then motion passes, and this will be recommended to the county commissioners. Thank you for being here.
How do we find out the date for that meeting?
We will send you an email. It'll probably be the second meeting in September.
Okay. Thank you.
And I make a motion to reopen the discussion of ZPH 2025-00022.
I'll second that.
All those, all those in favor of reopening that hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that public hearing is reopened, and now where do we go?
If you wanted to recall your applicant or any of the witnesses, basically you'd be reopening public comment.
Right.
And you also can call the applicant to make another statement.
Okay. So this applicant want to go first?
Again, Quinn Lynn Matthews, and we had a chance to discuss, and both the Podera Emma representatives and the neighbors in the area expressed an interest in taking time to consider the potential uses for the land. We have our impressions of what's possible on the land, but I think we need to, you know, consider if the, you know, the grading, the landscaping were no factor, what could potentially be put on that plot? And I think by pushing to next hearing, we'll have an opportunity to take that to the community and get their impression.
Okay. So it would be September 21st?
15.
September 15th, if you wanted to continue it to a date certain.
So we can make, and do we need to hear from?
Well.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
And do we need to hear from the Emma Podera people and the community?
If you re-reading the hearing, so if you wanted to have further public comment.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Goldin, do you?
Just before they come up, I was wondering if we may, since we have the planning board right in front of us, are there resources that we could engage with to better understand what's possible? I don't know that we want to have a very educated approach to understanding what's possible for that lot, but, thank you. If there are any resources that we can engage with to better understand what's possible, that would be useful.
So if you're looking for uses that would be allowed in that zoning district, it would be the commercial uses within the CS zoning district. As far as how to develop that property, that would be more difficult. Like, we always tell people when they call us and say, is something buildable? We can give you the regulations, but we can't tell you whether or not it's buildable or not. You, it's sort of, a design professional has to figure that out. So you, if someone was to do a commercial use, it would require parking, it would require that you meet the setbacks, it would require a safe entrance to that property. So all those things would be factored into particularly what you wanted to build and where it could be placed on the lot.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goldin?
Yes. Thank, thank you all, and thank you for this kind of unusual format. We really appreciate it. We agree it would be nice if, if this could kind of go on pause and we have the opportunity to discuss it again, looking at both uses and regulations and having that conversation. We also discussed inviting some of our neighbors on Emma Road who don't typically come to the neighborhood council so that we could have a wider discussion. And we also talked about having a conversation with Lynn about future uses of the property. As a nonprofit organization, we have a lot of different tools, like right of first refusal and deed restrictions and covenants and lots of things that we would just be interested in having that discussion so that we could look at potentially other creative ways to address some of the concerns that have been identified. So we, we all spoke and we all were in agreement that getting another month would be beneficial to everyone.
Right. Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think this is a question for Podera, but it may be for the applicant. Have any conversations been had with the owner of the vacant commercial property to your west?
Yes, I'm the one that's been in communication with. She's the property.
Of the commercial property on the left?
Yeah, that one's an unrelated parcel. It's a separate owner. I've not spoken to that.
I'm just curious if there are plans or what the, yeah, the state is, but, okay. And then a question to Jillian. How common or how difficult is it to kind of open the, open the conversation up again for rezoning after it's been zoned commercially? Is it very common to rezone again back to residential? Would the process be this all over again?
So just to remind the board, the county has never had Euclidian zoning, so if it is rezoned to commercial, residential uses would still be allowed because we allow residential uses in all zoning districts except for the airport district for obvious reasons.
Do you have occasion, though, where somebody actually petitions to go from commercial back to residential?
Because usually if you're going commercial back to residential, your, your intention is to build residential, and you can build residential in commercial districts. So we do have cases where people build residential uses on commercial property or neighborhood service property or employment property.
So no zoning is required? No rezoning is needed?
No.
Okay.
I have a question that's might be for legal. To what end does, does the applicant need to? To what end does, does the applicant need to withdraw the application for us to make a motion to delay it?
No.
And to what end? Because when, when I was on the planning board before, and this, where I'm a little bit confused, if an applicant came because we were reviewing subdivision plans and they met the ordinance, we were obligated to approve it. Is this the same scenario?
Because you're making your recommendations, you're not actually approving.
Okay.
And this is a legislative hearing, so it's not administrative like the subdivision ordinance, and they don't have to withdraw. You just have to continue it to that date certain, which would be September 15th.
So, we just need a motion to continue it till September 15th?
15th.
Date certain.
Date certain.
Any, do I need to close the hearing?
Uh, subject to adjournment.
Okay. So, if we're ready to take a vote, we just take a vote. Right. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before we move to a motion? Then, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we continue the, continue this hearing for ZPH 2025-00022 till our next planning board meeting on September 15th, 2025. I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And that's what we do. Thank you very much.
That's okay.
Appreciate y'all being, y'all being here.
Yes, we do.
And just so that for you guys, we will not reevaluate. This is a continued to a date certain, so if you want your neighbors to go get, we'd be involved. Even though this business happened.
Okay. So, back to our agenda, that brings us to adjournment.
Is there anything?
All those in favor of joining, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Is some points, Jillian, is there going to be an update on the Swanonoh small plan?
So
Now, we close the, the meeting.
We'll probably bring you a